Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. It's Monday, March 21st, 2016. It is now 8:35. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
Yes. Second. Courtney, please, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. Okay. The second order of business is a public hearing to receive comment on an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, Chapter 214, Parks and Public Places. This is the amendment to, very briefly, I'll explain, to allow dogs to be unleashed in the dog box, basically. Okay? I'll open it up for comment. Before I do that, Rick, do you want to make any comments? This is your commission's amendment.
Yeah, I think, you know, we brought this before you a couple of weeks ago before the public hearing here, but I think it's self-explanatory. The main issue is that right now the ordinance says there are no dogs off-leash anywhere in town. And so if we have a dog park, the idea is to let the dogs off-leash in the dog park. And so I think Pam revised the ordinance to reflect that, so that in the dog park, dogs will be allowed off-leash. We also submitted the rules. I think Gary, you had asked for that, I believe, at the last meeting. So these rules were looked at and revised and revised and looked at. Pam said it put on at the Dog Park Committee, Town Insurance Company, and we just put a lot together from other communities that have rules and regulations for dog parks, put those in to submit with the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'll ask your chairman to make the presentation.
Thank you.
Jack, good morning. How are you?
Fine, thank you. I'm Jack Penders for Copper Ridge Circle. I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission and for which I'm the chairperson. And I believe you have a two-part document in front of you. The first is the proposed change in the ordinance, and the second is indicated Dog Park Rules. I think for the convenience, you might want to mark the ordinance proposals number one, and we go for Dog Park Rules as number two. And they say that to keep them separate and distinct from each other, since you'll be voting on the proposed change in the ordinance. And there are three sections, two sections here for your consideration. The first is to allow dogs to be off-leash in a dog park. Right now, Section 214-2 consists of about four prohibited acts in the town. Number one is bringing any dog or allowing any dog in on any town property unless the dog or pet is kept on a leash or lead that is a maximum of seven feet in length and under the control of the owner and/or keeper at all times. That's the rule now. It'll continue to be the rule for all other items of town property unless and until you give us the exception, that would allow dogs to be off the leash in the Nut Plains Dog Park. So dogs still have to be, would still have to be on leashes elsewhere on all town property. We're asking for an exception to that. There's another exception that doesn't relate to us today, and that's for folks who are blind, hearing impaired, or mobility impaired. That's an exception that's in there, and it's referenced to the state statute on that. And also, the other three prohibited acts will also continue into the new proposed Dogs wouldn't, it would be a prohibited act to allow a dog or cause a dog to dig up or mutilate or deface any town property. Also, a dog can't cause an annoyance, and lastly, a dog, the dog owner or handler would have to immediately move the feces of such animal and dispose it in a proper manner. Now, there's another section here in the code that relates to penalties for offenses, offenses, not fences as we're proposing. So that regardless of whether, regardless of whether there's allowance on town property or not, as far as this is concerned, there's a penalty, it's a fine of more than $50 but less than $90. And also, the police department would have to consider it a violation of that chapter two. So there are protections under the existing regulations as well. But what we've also done, the folks from the Dog Park Ad-Hoc Group, the Citizens Group, 30 or 40 people, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the assistants of our fine counsel Pamela Millman, come up with that second document that you have before you. And it's named, called Dog Park Rules. It's comprised of three sections. Number one, what we call the rules of etiquette, much like on a playing field, sportsmanlike conduct are things of that nature. Also, there are state statutes that are contained within these proposed Dog Park Rules on that second page. A lot of them are referenced at the bottom of that document. Connecticut general statutes 22-341, 22-364, 22-357. And of course, that last section consists of the town code amendment that we're dealing with today. And it's clear on its face. We would expect that maybe from time to time, as we gain more experience and more exposure with this dog park at Nut Plains Park, that there might be a change in these so-called rules of etiquette, maybe in addition to it. So to that extent, I don't see that, us having to come back to the Board of Selectmen every time for a change in the etiquette. But it's clear. As an example, there's a limit of three dogs per visit to the dog park. So an owner or handler can have no more than three dogs in the dog park. And the reasons for that are very clear. They have to be in control and within vision and sight of the dogs in the dog park. If they brought in eight, 10, 12 dogs, that would be a possibility. And we have a provision under 12, that children under the age of 14 must be accompanied by an adult male inside the fenced enclosure.
Why an adult male?
By an adult. By an adult, excuse me.
Oh, okay. I missed something here, because I didn't see that. I was like, no, thanks.
I hope that they might be reading their mail while they're...
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything.
I just wanted to make sure you're paying attention.
Yeah, I have to.
And you were. And also, children under the age of five are not allowed to dog park either.
Leashed or unleashed?
Excuse me? I didn't hear you.
Child on leash.
Well, that could be necessary, too. It's not a requirement. I think we're parking up the wrong tree. Joanne Basile was one of the lead and key people in drafting and researching these rules of etiquette, too. And I do more than, do more than commend her. If she wants to add to that, please do. You don't have to.
No, I'm only here, along with Catherine Kiernan...
Catherine Kiernan.
...to answer any questions that the Board of Selectmen may have about any of these rules. They are, they're nothing that we, there's nothing unique to these rules. As you probably know, the growth of dog parks in the state of Connecticut has grown exponentially. At one point, I think we reported that there are 35, there are probably over 40 now dog parks operating in the state. These rules are based on a kind of review of the Dog Park Rules, all of which are posted on their websites, and we tried to pull and cull from those things that made sense for the town of Guilford.
Okay. I'm going to open up the floor to, this is still a public hearing, to any questions regarding the change in ordinance. Remember, the change as ordinance is related to not requiring the dogs to be on leashes while they're in a dog park. That's pretty simple. Any questions in the public? Gary?
And I thank you for providing the rules, because I was going to ask them, and I think you've done a great job with it. I'd just like to ask Pam a question. The bold print at the top that says the town of Guilford is not liable, I'm paraphrasing, for any damage caused to any person, dog, or property. Am I correct in assuming that the town cannot absolve itself of all liability if the town is negligent?
Absolutely.
So if the town, it's a statement, but it's not necessarily binding, or it would not necessarily prevent a lawsuit.
Correct. It helps the town's position, but it isn't answered.
Understood, okay. And I understand that. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
Okay. Since there are no...
Oh, I have one question. Why children under five? How did that? I'm just curious. Is that Branford's? Did you look at Branford?
No, that's the address. Branford doesn't have, actually, an official dog park, strangely enough. They, and I'm not even sure of the one that they have over on Short Beach, which is probably the closest to what they have, has any posted rules. The rule under, about children under five, is just good practice, because, as Jack mentioned, one of the requirements are that you have to have, you have to be within voice control and visual control of your dog at all times, so that you can intervene in the event that there's an issue. It's very hard, as a mother, you must know that...
Listen, Matt, that's fine. I just wanted you to explain for the record, because I get it.
All right, okay. Right. It's very hard to do both. You can't do both things well at the same time, and that's the reason. And children, obviously, little ones in particular, can get hurt if a dog comes running up to you and kind of body slams you, right? If you're only that tall. If you've got a dog that's that tall, it can, so we're taking a very cautious approach.
Okay. Also, let me add, if anybody's watching this, too, having done, you know, insurance work for years, most of the bites with little kids are from little dogs, because the kids go right in their face. So that's another thing that, you know, again, it's a lot of its liability, just wanting to prevent accidents. So I think that's a good rule.
Okay. Just no further questions. I'll ask for comments. Anyone want to speak in favor of the amendment? Anyone want to speak in opposition of the amendment? Okay. If not, I'll take a motion now to close the public hearing.
Sumoit.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing is closed.
Joe, can I just ask one question of these gentlemen?
Sure.
Before they leave. Jack, you mentioned that the off-leash, to the best of your knowledge, this is the only property that this applies to in the town?
It would be the only property.
A year ago, we opened Daniel's Ave Beach to dogs, but the seven-foot leash requirement is still in place in that site. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
Any town property.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item three, public forum, limited to three minutes on any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the board? Yes, sir. Come to the table. I need your name and address and...
My name is Paul Illinois. 682 New England Road. Good morning, Mr. Mazza, fellow selectman. I have the following comments in regards to Agenda Item Number Five. I support the petition for a special town meeting referendum to discuss and vote on the spending of $950,000 to install a second synthetic turf field at the high school. The original voter-approved plans for the high school called for a natural sod practice field, not a synthetic field. Since the Guilford High School Building Committee decided on December 9th, 2015, to allocate an additional $950,000 to install such field, in lieu of the originally planned natural sod field, there's been quite a lot of discussion about the hazards of these synthetic fields. There is pending legislation at the state level that aims to ban the quote-unquote "highly recommended" and budgeted infill tire crumb rubber for the new Guilford High School practice field. The highly recommended infill for this synthetic turf field is comprised of 30,000 pulverized old tires that are spread on top of the synthetic green fibers. There is no regulation as to the age or origination of such tires used. On 2/12/2016, the EPA, in coordination with the CDC and CPSC, launched the first comprehensive study to examine the safety of these fields, with preliminary results due out at the end of this year. Why would Guilford not wait for those results? Insurance companies that insure municipalities have recently started to reevaluate their risk assessments in regards to these synthetic fields, especially those that utilize crushed tires as infill. The high school project as a whole is not complete, and there's still a lot of work to be done. The exact amount of leftover funds is unknown and will remain to be unknown until the school is 100% complete. This is about a year away. If there are leftover funds in the school budget when the project is complete, they should be sent back to you, the Board of Selectmen, so you can lower the amount of money that taxpayers need to finance. In my opinion, spending more money than required to complete a town project to original spec is fiscally irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board in public forum? Limited to three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name, please, and address.
My name is Margot White. I'm at 683 Ritchie's Way in Guilford. I'm a mom. I have four boys here in schools. I'm also a health educator, and I appreciate that you put this on the agenda today to give us the opportunity to speak. I want to let you know that our Facebook group has 270 followers. Our change.org petition has 240 signatures, and abundance of these are from moms, just like me. We're not a handful of people. Given the latest research cautions and the new comprehensive federal investigation initiated by Senator Blumenthal, we're actually shocked that the town of Guilford plans on moving forward with this field, as opposed to the originally planned natural grass turf. And we feel that at the very least, we should have the right to vote on this matter. There are a number of reasons for our petition. Paul already mentioned the federal investigation. Also, after conducting research of their own, scientists from Mount Sinai recommend that the town of Guilford err on the side of caution by opting not to install an additional crumb rubber turf field. In the absence of convincing evidence of safety, we recommend that children not play on surfaces that contain known carcinogens and neurotoxins. And this letter was sent to members of the High School Building Committee on February 9th, 2016. We also have, I'm not sure how much information you received from us, we did provide quite a bit, but the Yale University, Yale School of Environmental Chemistry Study revealed 96 chemicals in the crumb rubber, half of which had no safety data. Of the chemicals that underwent toxicity assessments, 20% are considered probable carcinogens, and 40% are considered irritants. January 2016, the city of Hartford has now banned the use of synthetic turf on all fields. The CDC recommends that anyone in contact with synthetic turf fields washes their hands and body thoroughly, remove shoes and clothing, and turn clothing inside out to avoid spreading dust and particles. They also caution against lying down on the field and eating while on the field. As a mom, I'm personally shocked that it's gone to this level, that we have to ask for a vote. It just seems like such common sense to wait until this federal investigation is done. What more proof do we need to provide that crumb rubber is no good for our children? Guilford residents are very concerned, and we urge you to let the people of Guilford vote on this. I also have a piece from David Brown, public health toxicologist. Crumb rubber infill contains a large number of chemicals known to be toxic to humans. These include chemicals associated with cancer, asthma, and other adverse health effects. There is no safe threshold level for exposure to carcinogens. The only way to eliminate cancer risk from these chemicals is to eliminate exposure. No existing study disputes the inherent hazard of these chemicals. The studies simply draw varying conclusions regarding the total amount of these chemicals posed to children who are likely to be exposed when they play on artificial turf fields. In addition, I'd also like to mention the issues with heat on these fields. Heat levels on and above artificial turf fields have been measured at up to 200 degrees Fahrenheit, which can lead to heat stroke, dehydration in schoolchildren, as well as professional athletes. These high temperatures on turf have also been known to cause skin burns. So our question is, why Guilford would move forward with something that is so highly controversial right now until we know more? So I really appreciate your consideration with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Board of Selectmen. My name is Roberta Silbert. I live at 155 White Birds Drive. I've a Guilford residence for 37 years, and I have a degree in public health from the Yale School of Medicine. I want to speak today mainly about the risks to children playing on synthetic turf fields. And when I say synthetic turf fields, I don't, I mean irregardless of what the infill is. I know that I'm here today also in support of the people who would like to move forward with the town meeting. Those that are interested in this issue and opposed to synthetic turf have been to many boards and commissions over the last few months. Everyone that has been spoken to seems to say that their board or their commission does not have any authority to make a decision. The only people that, to my knowledge, that felt that they did have a decision-making was the Guilford High School Building Committee, which I thought was advisory to the Board of Selectmen. That's why I'm glad to have the opportunity today, because I feel that the Board of Selectmen has the, would have responsibility legal and otherwise to the people of the town. I think that we try to do the best for our children and keep them safe, so it seems to me to make no sense to involuntarily exposing children in Guilford to toxins that can cause harm. There's a principle called the precautionary principle that basically says that once you're aware of something like synthetic turf, or pesticides, or asbestos, that can potentially cause harm, you should protect from that harm. And there's a duty to protect, even if you're not totally certain at a particular moment in time. And I think that there's certainly, now with mounting evidence against synthetic turf, I think that there would be, not only is there a health issue, but there would be legal and financial issues to the town down the road if that was approved. And interestingly, when I talked about accountability, I saw Cynthia shake her head that the Guilford Building Committee, when I said they didn't have authority, you seemed to shake your head. And I wonder why the Board of Selectmen don't have authority. It would seem to me that you're the elected officials of the town, and I would hope that you would make the proper decision in this matter.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Jerry Silbert, 155 White Birds Drive. Board of Selectmen, good morning. A couple of things. I'm a physician, trained in pathology, which is the study of the cause and effect of human disease. I've looked at some of the information with regard to crumb rubber, and as has been mentioned, they contain about 12 carcinogens, 20 irritants, and about 40% of the chemicals identified have not even been tested for their safety. In addition, you might know that there have been a number of reports of cancers among athletes who play on synthetic turf. Many of them are on soccer goalies, who in the course of their playing and practice are constantly diving into the turf. This is more or less anecdotal and needs to be followed up, but really should cause some concern. It's been mentioned that the federal government is going to do a study. The agencies are the Environmental Protection Agency, the Center for Disease Control, and the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. So there's going to be an extensive study of this. I would also say that having worked with various towns in Connecticut in terms of natural turf, I've seen a very, I would say, substantial success in providing natural turf that does not use toxic lawn pesticides and can withstand a very high level of play as well, when they're properly maintained and constructed. And this is certainly an alternative that needs to be considered. So given the study by the federal government, which is not yet complete, it's probably best to postpone that decision and time to consider alternatives to artificial turf. And that's why I support the town meeting to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board on any agenda item? Okay. See none, we'll close the public forum portion. Item four, approved the minutes of March 7th, which was a regular meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
A second, okay. Any additions or corrections? See none. All those in favor? Aye. Minutes are approved as presented. Item five, receive and take possible action on a petition requesting the Board of Selectmen call a special town meeting on whether to allocate $950,000 for the installation of a second synthetic turf field prior to the results of the new federal investigation into the safety of such fields. Pam, did you want to address the board? Thank you. And I will say, the petition was received by the town clerk, and 59 signatures were certified. Our town charter calls for 50, so we're in compliance. Okay. Thank you. Welcome back from vacation, by the way.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Obviously, this is a very serious issue, and we consulted town attorney Leclair Ryan, Mike Dorni, who issued an opinion on the whether a town meeting could be held for this issue. In fact, under our charter and statutorily, this issue is not a proper subject for a town meeting action. So let me just give you kind of why, you know, why this issue is the responsibility of the Guilford High School Building Committee. Basically, on May 16th, 2011, the Guilford Board of Selectmen unanimously passed three resolutions relating to the potential financing and construction of the high school. The resolutions specifically provided that the building committee was to be established by the Board of Selectmen, and that they were delegated the authority to determine the scope and the particulars of the project, including the fields. The resolution complied with a requirement of the Connecticut State Board of Education that as a precondition to the approval and issuance of any school construction grant, a town must certify to the establishment of a decision-making building committee for each project. So we were required, the board was required to do this in order to even, you know, be permitted to have the funding for this project. permitted to have the funding for this project. The townspeople had, had a say at that point. The resolution was ultimately considered by a Guilford town meeting on May 31st, 2011, and adopted by the Guilford voters at a referendum held on June 14th, 2011. So what occurred is the decisions regarding the construction of the playfields is delegated and left entirely to the school building committee. It is the conclusion of Mike Dorni, our town attorney, and I agree with his analysis that the town meeting has no authority to give advisory opinions on a matter over which at this juncture has no jurisdiction. So respectfully, I'd say that the proper body to consider the risks, the health risks, is the Guilford Building Committee, that the Board of Selectmen can't, can't act in this situation because of that delegation.
You're out of order, sir?
So, you know, I don't really know how much discussion has been had at the Guilford Building Committee's level, but I would, I guess, urge you to communicate directly with that body.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. All right. It's still the decision of this board whether to send this to a town meeting or not. You have in your packet the opinion letter from our town attorney, which was reviewed by our in-house counsel, which you just heard, per interpretation of it, but it's pretty clear and spelled out. We have attorneys sitting next to me, too, if you want a further clarification of it. But Mike spelled it out, I guess, you know, in clear English, that this board has the authority to send it to a town meeting, but according to the charter, it has no merit to send it to a town meeting. Okay? And the basis for not sending it to a town meeting is the 2011 resolution that was passed by the voters by, I think, 85%. And it's important that people understand that when they vote on a resolution, to read the entire resolution. That goes for any bonding proposal. Now, what you see on the ballot is just a summary, but the resolution is in the clerk's office, the full resolution. Sometimes it's three pages, which states that, I'm paraphrasing now, and I'm also giving you my personal opinion, is that the building committee has full authority for the project. And I'm saying, and I'm saying the building, I'm saying the project. And that includes the building, the grounds, which includes the parking lots, the fields, et cetera. That resolution passed by the voters, not by the Board of Selectmen, not by the Board of Education, not by the Board of Finance, the voters. We voted on, three, we, meaning the voters, voted on three referendums that totaled $92 plus million for this project. If you remember, there were three resolutions. One was for the building, was $89 plus million. One was for the energy component, and the third one was a half million dollars for the shelter component, which was a half million dollars to beef up the roof. All that totaled $92,800,200,000, I think that was the total number. Am I right, Barbara? I think that's close. That gave the authority to the building committee, not to the Board of Selectmen. And the voters gave the authorities. That means, to be very simplistic, and then you guys can jump in on, that means that the building committee does not have to come back to the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance every time they had to make a change order. If they wanted to move, turn the building around, or if they wanted to change the color of the rooms and needed a change order, they didn't have to come back here. That's why there was written that, like, it was. So it's in the hands of the building committee. I'm sorry, folks, that's the way it is. Now, Mrs. Beeman put out a very good and excellent email to a lot of you folks. I have it right here. And this has nothing to do with our decision here whether we sent it to a town meeting, but I think it spells out where the building committee is on this particular issue. They haven't made a decision yet.
Well, and Joe, if I could, I think it's very important to remind all citizens, first of all, let me say, I think we're all concerned about the safety of our kids.
Absolutely, yeah.
There's no, no discussion there. But I think it's very important to reiterate that all meetings of the standing building committee are public meetings. And I see-
Of the, of the high school building.
High school building. The high school building committee. And I see in the minutes, they constantly reiterate that, that people should attend and give your opinions or your requests directly to them, because no decision has been made yet as far as I know. And I think it's very important that they hear from citizens directly. I mean, obviously, they've read letters and whatnot to the editor, as we all have. But I would recommend that all of the petitioners or anyone concerned should attend the meetings of, especially if there's anything on the agenda, but you can attend any meeting of the standing, of the high school building committee. And I think, I think we should. I think we all should.
Pam, this may be technical, but do I understand the memo from the town attorney to suggest that were we to interfere with the actions of the building committee, then in fact, we could put the construction grant in some jeopardy?
I haven't really-
Technically.
I haven't thought through the point about whether it could put that in jeopardy, but if it's a mandate that you delegate the authority to a committee, there certainly might be an argument to that effect. You know, the one thing that is really emphasized in the opinion is that you really, under our charter, the town meeting has no jurisdiction over this because of that delegation of authority. So it can't even, in a way, your vote is that you, it would violate the charter to send it to town meeting. So you don't have jurisdiction in this matter because of that delegation. Which, you know, to back up, when those resolutions were drafted, there was a bond counsel input, Jepton O'Frio, who's our construction counsel, who talked, you know, who advised the town on the scope of those resolutions. So this has been vetted at that earlier date thoroughly in terms of making sure it was consistent with school projects in the state, and it was, you know, that-
I just want to pick up on what Paul said. No way, I don't think anybody in this board would want to jeopardize the safety of anyone in this town, whether it be a high school student, or grade school, or any student, or the adults who could play on that field, let's face it. But we are bound by that document that we call a charter, and we can't violate it. At least I will. That's, that's what we're sworn to uphold when we take an oath to serve on this board, whether we like it or not. That's what we're bound by. And that's why we ask for legal opinions on this. And to Gary's point, we're not going to jeopardize also the project and the funding. Now, to Mrs. Beeman's memo again, she makes a point saying, "The RFP for the artificial turf field installation has not been issued nor even drafted to date. Most likely bidders will submit alternative infillings. After bids are received, the GHSC will make a decision on all materials to be used in the field's construction." Am I right, Mary? To me, that means you and your committee have not made a decision at all as to what the filler will be, nor has it been designed at all. And you also state that the GHSC is monitoring activity at the federal, state, and local level, including the Guilford Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, with regard to any changes in policy on artificial turf. So everyone is cognizant of the problem, and no decisions have been made. But as far as this board goes, we have a duty to uphold the charter, and the advice of council is to, whether we send this to town committee or not, I mean, to a town meeting or not, and I, my vote would be that we have to follow the charter and not send it to a town meeting. Okay? Any further discussion?
The only comment I would make, and normally we don't respond to public forum issues, but as a member of the Options Review Committee, leading up to the, the decision to move forward and the resolutions, and as liaison to the building committee, the subject of an artificial turf had been discussed all the way through. I mean, it was a, it was subject, it was one of those issues that was subject to financial considerations, but it was always on the table.
I'll second that with Gary, because I was part of that process as well, but I just have to echo what Joe says, no decision's been made. And I know it's hard to hear, but it's not, you have to follow the laws, so we can't, if every time we didn't like a decision they made, say, "That's it, we're overturning the decision," then you can't do that. I mean, it's, that's, we, we bound them with the authority to do this project, because honestly, you're not the first that's come to us, you know, this, in this method, you came in this method, but that has disagreed with decisions the committee's made, although I would say that the health and safety's a different level, and they're obviously considering that. So it's not like they're dismissing it, or pooh-poohing it, or saying it's not serious. They're the ones you should be talking to. And I got a number of emails from folks, and I told them, "That's who you need to be talking to." And I forwarded all those emails on to Mrs. Beeman and the board and say, "Listen, you know, listen to the people." And that's what they're, as far as I know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing and hearing. So, you know, I think you have to understand, there's a process that we have to follow, so.
Well, I think there's two issues here. One, the petition for us to vote to bring this to town meeting is against the rules of our charter, and we're bound to uphold the rules of our charter. On the other hand, I think I can speak for everyone. Everyone is concerned about the health of our, of our citizens, period, as Joe said, not just the kids. And I think we have an obligation as a citizenry to work with the high school building committee to come up with the best possible decision. So rather than go and maybe argue about this, I think we simply should go to the standing, the high school building committee meetings and discuss the issue, discuss our concerns, and I'm sure that the high school building committee will do the right thing. They're good people. They've done a fabulous job. And I have faith that, that they feel the same way that we all do, a concern for our kids and for our citizens.
But I would also point out, and this is a personal view, I'm not a scientist, but there is, there is information to the contrary to what was presented here about the health and safety of natural fields and the health and safety of artificial fields, and all sides need to be considered.
And that's what the federal investigation will probably do.
Okay.
I move that we could not take action on the petition as presented.
Is it, is there a-
Oh, I'm not doing something?
I don't know. Do we have to vote on it, or we just don't vote?
You just state that, you know, you don't have jurisdiction over this matter, so if you cannot send the town, it's a statement that's identifying that.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that at all?
Yeah.
Okay. Gary, give me your motion.
I make the motion that we do not have standing to review this.
And you're going to follow, we follow town council's advice.
We follow town council's advice, and the charter's-
Made second and any discussion? Call for vote, all's in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Pam. Okay, item six, been standing out in the hall patiently. Board of Education Director of Operations, Tef Gurnum, consider, six dot one, consider and take possible action to waive the bidding and enter into a contract with Fuss and O'Neill for the environmental consulting services for the Baldwin windows and door replacement project.
Good morning, thank you for having me. Now we let you sit down. So as you know, we're trying to move forward with a window and doors project at Baldwin Middle School, and hopefully we'll be able to do part of that project this summer. We have found that there are PCBs in some of the caulking at, yeah, in the, in the window caulking.
At Baldwin.
At Baldwin. So what we're looking at doing is, we met with a couple consultants, Fuss and O'Neill happens to be under state contract, we did meet with them, they seem to have a good understanding of the regulations and what is required. So the standing building committee has recommended to move forward an award, the necessary testing and research and specifications that would be required as part of the Baldwin Window and Doors Project. So we are asking you to waive the bid process since they are under state, the Connecticut State Department Administration, Administrative Services contract, and award the work in the amount of $34,594.07 to Fuss and O'Neill.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Call for vote, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Six dot two, discuss and take possible action to approve change order number 002 for the fitness center renovations. Okay.
So we are finishing up the fitness center, we were very close to completion, we're working on a few bunch of other lists. These are change orders that have been approved by the standing building committee and has moved forward with most of these. We combined a total of seven change order, potential proposals into one official AIA change order, and I think you all received a list of what they consist of, and each one's kind of various reasons for having them. Item one, where we removed the old deteriorating ductwork, we now have an open ceiling, so we removed the old deteriorating insulation so that we can just actually just paint everything, clean it up, and we won't have a maintenance issue in the future. So that's why we had done that one. Items two, were an unforeseen item that was required by code for us to do, so we had a vent line in the bathroom that was not properly connected based upon building codes, so we had to correct that to meet building codes. And then item three, we had to meet additional ADA, other sign requirements- And then item three, we had to meet additional ADA, other sign requirements, because we took the old, old building and made the renovations, we had to make some alterations to the parts that weren't being reutilized, just so that they still met code when the building becomes occupied under the new CO, so that was part of that piece. Items four through seven were change orders to accommodate the long-term projection, projected use of the building. So we added additional heat and smoke detectors on the second and, in the attic, second floor and in the attic space, which will be required if that space is utilized in the future. We did that now versus waiting, because we do have storage, utilizing it for town storage, so there's a lot of equipment and other stuff that is important and vital, so we want to make sure that's protected in case something happens, we'll have notification through the fire alarm system. And then lastly, again, another co-compliant issue was to change and do some electrical work on the existing elevator in order to make it co-compliant for use with the new CO as well, so. So under this change order proposal, we're asking for a total of $34,273, and presently we have about $50,000 remaining in our contingency funds for that project.
Okay. For the purposes of discussion, I would move that we approve the change order in the amount of $34,273.
Second.
Just a question, my recollection is that this project does not include air conditioning, but it was designed in such a way that...
Correct.
Should we have, should we find the money for air conditioning equipment, compressors, et cetera, that it will, the interior, the ductwork, et cetera, is all designed appropriately?
Correct. Yes. So we may come back if we do maintain a balance on the project to see if we can add some air conditioning at the end of the project.
Do you have a number for what that might be?
It's in the range between, I think, $50,000 and $70,000.
Okay. We have taken 70 out of the...
We took 70 out of the project, correct.
Okay. Because I, I know, it, some concern has been expressed that running a fitness center without air conditioning is problematic.
Correct.
Okay.
But we, also keep in mind... I thought you were supposed to sweat.
That's right.
Totally so much.
The prior weight room fitness center did not have air conditioning either, so I wouldn't say we're going backwards, we just haven't taken that step forward yet, but it is one of our goals to get that installed.
Want to lose weight, lose it quicker. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. One more. Consider and take possible action to award RFQ/RFP number one dash 1516 on-call architect and engineering services.
Correct. So the Standing Building Committee received a number of RFQs when we went out to bid. They were able to go through and they shortlisted approximately six firms, and out of the six firms, they interviewed all, all six of those, they reduced it down to four firms, that they are now presently recommending that we enter into a on-call services, I don't know if it's actually a contract.
Yes.
Is it actually a contract? So those four firms would be Hank's LLC, CWA, Kenneth Borson Architects, and BL Company. So this would allow us to have on-call architects for both of town, and the Board of Education for future upcoming projects.
Okay. Wait, any more motion?
I'm moving that.
Second. Motion's made in second, any discussion?
My only, my only one question, I see Silver Petrocelli bid, and I know they do a lot with us, but they were not considered for this list.
Correct.
Does that affect our future use of them going forward? Because I know they've been involved in a lot of school projects.
Well, Silver Petrocelli Associates, who's recent, most of their recent work was based upon us going out for an RFP/RQ, because the projects themselves were larger than an on-call services, and that's how they actually won those. They were not on the on-call prior either. It doesn't mean that they're eliminated out of it, they just felt that we were hoping to have some fresh eyes potentially in the district.
It's a good idea.
So this is, this is for relatively small projects?
Correct. Engineering projects up to about $50,000.
Correct.
Correct.
Any further discussions, questions, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thanks.
Okay. Request from one of the selectmen if we can move item 10 up on the agenda, if there are any problems with that, there's some people waiting here.
Nope.
Okay. Make a motion to consider item 10, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 10, consider and take possible action on an ordinance to amend the code for the town of Guilford, Chapter 214, parks and public places, as a result of the earlier public hearing.
I move we amend as drafted.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Admitted. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. Okay, item seven, Finance Director Sheila Vilano. Receive monthly report from the Finance Director. Morning, Sheila.
Thank you.
Actually, we, it wasn't, went on long.
Yeah, so you're perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Okay, so we have our financial reports as of February 29th, 2016, 66% of the way through the year, we'll start with revenue. We've collected 98.5% of our revenue budget versus 98.8% last year. Basically, we're still right on, on track, we have $1,003,000 to collect, not counting the state funds, which is basically where we were last year, you know, and we ended up with a fairly sizable surplus on revenue last year, so we're heading in the right direction. Tax collections are a little under last year, but still strong. We've collected the supplemental motor vehicle at this point, so that always helps the collection rate. So I really don't see any problems with revenue. Do you have any questions? Keep moving along.
Well, I think last year too, if I can comment.
Sure.
We had a lot more in building fees too, because of DDR's project too.
Yeah, and even, even so, the, the building permits is still over their...
Their budget.
They're at 78.7% versus 66.6, so they're still doing better than, than budgeted, but...
Compared to last year, they're at 80.
In terms of the dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where I think it was.
Okay. Okay, on expenditures, we've obligated 73.7% of our budget versus 73.0% last year. One of the contributing factors to that number is the debt service interest, there's a deficit, well, at the moment, there's a deficit balance of $170,000 or so, and that's due to the fact that we, we budgeted for a transfer of $200,000 from a reserve for debt service. We purposely set aside $400,000, if you recall, for debt on the high school bonds when we first issued our first issue in August of '14, $200,000 for fiscal '16, and $200,000 of that was going to go also for '17. So if we took that out and we assumed that we were at zero, which we will be when we end the year, we will cover that in some fashion, we would be at 73.2% versus 73.0%. So that brings us more in line with where we were last year.
So we still need to make a transfer?
So we do need to make a transfer to keep, because every department has to be, cannot have a, it has to be balanced at least at, close of the fiscal year. The question is whether we take that 200,000 or 170,000 from the fund balance reserve or from contingency and just leave...
Leave the fund balance.
The fund balance reserve as is in tact or future, you know, needs, we don't necessarily need it this year. So I think that's a decision we need to make before the end of the fiscal year and not yet. See how we do, because we still have the $175,000 of contingency that we haven't touched.
And we've been blessed with a mild winter, so we're going to be okay.
Right. And also...
This morning.
It never falls during business hours either. If you take a, well, I could tell you, you don't have to look, we've gotten some of the FEMA funds I've been talking about from last year's snowstorm, and most of it is in Public Works. There's a line item for severe winter storm, the date is cut off, but we deposited 81,505 in Public Works, there's some in my budget in finance for our administrative time, we got close to $100,000. So that's helping this budget as well. If you look at Public Works, they actually are 63.5% expended, make sure I'm on the right line, I'm...
Seventy-one point.
Seventy, I was on the wrong line, 71.8% versus 79.5% last year, so that helped them. So overall, the expenditure budget's in a good position at this point.
Any questions on either revenue or expense? Nope?
The only comment, Sheila, is that number's wrong.
It should be 63.5. I saw that.
66.64, I don't know where that came from.
That's some kind of crazy rounding.
I want to look at medical, please.
Yep. Medical, well, we, we've not gotten, as of this morning, the report from Anthem that shows where we are with the catastrophic claim.
Claims, yeah.
They actually sent us an email on Friday, I think, saying that they're working on it.
Get a little better on claims in prior months.
Our claims are getting better, which leads me to believe that there may be more in the catastrophic claims that's covered by the stop loss, but at this point, we are projecting a $581,000 surplus, add it to our fund balance at June 30th, the 15th brings us to over $1,002,000 fund balance, which is great.
You know what I wanted, we can have a chance to talk on Friday, but there's some questions which we don't, we can talk later on the special funds, that I don't know if you had a chance to look at.
I don't know what your questions are, though.
Of course, I didn't ask you. Okay. Let me get to it. Sit with me. Actually, I did answer my own questions, I'm sorry, I did have them. Most of them were on the, were on the, were on the high school, I have, I have my answers on that, so sorry about that, I didn't look at them. Okay, okay, good. Anybody else, anything? Anything else you want to bring to attention?
No, that's it.
Okay, good. All right, we do have one more item for you, though. Seven dot two, consider and take possible action on a notice of the annual town budget meeting and budget referendum. You know what I wanted to ask you on this, is the Board of Finance has approved both the school and town budget last, about 10 days ago. Why do we have to wait so long to send it to referendum?
Why does that referendum take him?
Yeah.
I believe that because the annual budget meeting is set on the first Tuesday of April.
Okay, okay.
Well, right, and, right, so we could have had it the week before, but we have to wait until after so many days after the annual budget meeting, which is that first Tuesday.
It just seems like, you know, why are we waiting so long?
We could have had it the week before, and we did have it the week before on the original calendar, and then we changed it because of the school vacation.
Okay, so that's the reason?
For the one week, yes.
Okay. All right, because I was thinking of moving it up, that's why I was asking, but I would not want to have it during spring break necessarily. Okay, all right, ask the question. Okay, so we have to approve a notice of an annual town budget meeting of April 5th, 2016, and the notice of the referendum, which is the following week of Tuesday, April 19th, 2016, which is a machine vote. Okay. Do I have a motion, please?
Okay.
All right. Any discussion on those dates? I just brought up what I wanted to bring up.
The only discussion is that this was one of the first years that I remember having a, a notice of sale without any bond questions, there will be no questions from it.
Yeah, right, okay. Call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any else, Sheila?
That's it.
Okay, item eight, Park and Recreation Director, Rick Maiden, eight dot one, consider and take possible action to approve a quote for the dog park fencing.
Hello again.
Hello.
We also have Jack Van Der Sis here and Sue Robbins from the Parks and Recreation Commission.
They're sitting there very patiently.
When I sent the note, I forgot to mention that the funds for this is coming from the Dog Park Committee.
Okay.
Joanne Basil, who is left, and Catherine Kieran have done a tremendous job, I just spoke with Catherine, they're, they've raised around $39,000, $40,000 to date, and their goal was $38,000. They've done this in like three months. They had an event at the marketplace, I think, last weekend, and they had a dog parade around the green, they raised about $9,000 with a telephone just that day alone. So they've done a tremendous job. So the funds, anything we're spending is, is coming out of that, that money, it's not town money. So we, we solicited quotes for the fencing at the dog park, it would be about 1,300 linear feet of a black vinyl fence with seven gates, I believe, yeah, seven gates, and there are three or four service gates, and then the gates for the dogs to get in and out there, and the people. And so, yeah, we're going to let the people in there too. So we have three quotes, I think I have in there, Fence World was $18,465, Atlas Companies $31,199, and Total Fence $37,000.
Wow.
Quite a difference there.
Are these different material?
No, it's all the same spec. We, we sent them the exact same spec out to everybody.
Have you ever done any, have you ever done any work with this Fence World?
They've done a lot of work with us, yeah.
Atlas.
They're good. Atlas has done a lot, Fence World has done a lot with us. Yeah, they're, they're good company.
But there's no reason, rationale for the huge...
I can't explain it, I don't know. I'm glad they're that price, but I don't know why the other ones are so, it is a big difference, but they, they all quartered in the same thing, same exact type, you know, pipes and...
And you have a track record.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they're all good company, I know all the companies, I've heard of them.
Yeah.
I know of their reputation, so.
They're all reputable, yeah.
That's, okay, it's...
You might have a warehouse full of this stuff that they're trying to get rid of, they happen to have this particular...
That's true, it's a good point.
Well, it could be.
Item, who knows?
Who knows, yeah.
Just be grateful.
We did vet these out, so, yeah.
Take your work.
So I'll move the, oh, go ahead.
I would just ask PM a question. Since the friends are, are doing this, but I guess the town's installing it, do the normal town bid policies apply?
It's not even town funds, so...
Right.
I, I would say it's, they're not bound by it, but it obviously is prudent.
But they're here.
It's a good practice.
Shot out three quotes, and it's, it's good for everyone, so.
Okay. It's going on town property, so...
Yeah.
I thought we should try to follow it.
Yeah, no, I think it was wise to do it the way you approached it.
Will we approve the bid from Fence World?
Second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion? Call for vote, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Rick, what's the date they're looking to finish it and open? Do we have?
They hope by, I think, mid to late June, they're hoping.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
All right, great.
There's going to be some expansion with the parking... Is there going to be some expansion with the parking lot there?
Yes, yeah, I think about twenty spaces roughly, which will be beneficial to La Crosse, too, you know.
Yeah, because the ball field is short on spaces.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Item nine, Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission, Joe Dudsmore, nine dot one, discuss and take possible action on RFQ slash P two dash fifteen sixteen, operation management maintenance for Guilford Lakes Golf Course. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Well, I'm back, okay.
Glad to have you back.
Right, thank you. So let me give you a short synopsis of what has happened to this point. Last year or so, the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Board of Finance, has been looking to see if there was a better way to manage the golf course. With that in mind, the committee that went out with an RFQ, which we started, Pam and I started in July or June or wherever, seems like a long time, okay? Back in February, actually in December, we went out with the RFQ. We had a site visit, which five companies came out. In February, or actually end of January, I believe, we opened up the proposals and technical, as well as bidding, and two firms bid on this. One was Billy Casper out of Virginia, and the other one was Commonwealth Golf out of Yardley. We invited both these firms to come up to visit us in February. We asked questions of it, of them, and then I met with you folks again, and then we went back to make a final decision. And the decision that the golf committee has come up is that we are going to pass on both proposals, mainly due to, cost-wise, we can do it cheaper in-house, and, but we did learn some things from them, okay? How to run a golf course a little bit different, it's always nice to sit down, maybe sometimes we should go to conventions and learn new ways of doing things. And I wrote things down because I didn't want to forget them, okay? But, you know, one of the things that we saw was the cost of doing things, and to make money, you have to spend some money. We are updating our social media program. We've already taken steps to actually open the golf course this past week, okay, which is one of the earliest that we've been there. I know it's snowing outside, so I told George Page, if you want to play golf today, but use colored balls, okay? So, and George has been a nice addition to the committee. So we're updating our social media, we're really trying to get more involved in targeting, okay? We know that the people are using Facebook as one of the entries. We also are aware that the younger generation is very Twitter oriented, and that's something I have no knowledge about because of my age. But we are learning, we are learning about how to do this. We also learned that, you know, we need to expand our hours, and also looked at some other areas from knowledge of how to discount on slow times, okay? We also learned that, you know, one of the best things that we can do for the golf course, and when we were very successful, is that we had a professional. And we are looking into what we call PGA apprentice, see if we can get someone to really get involved in developing a junior program. When we had Bill Fix Henry there, Bill had a total of eighty-seven kids in the junior program. Looking back, we really feel this was one of the reasons Guilford became not a power in the high school golf, but it's, was a benefit for all the town. We joke with Bill, we call it Bill's Daycare Center, because we see all the minivans and SUVs coming up and dropping the kids off. But, you know, this is something that we need to relook into, to really get back into making this, it will cost some money, but we'll make some money, okay? Update in-house programs. We needed, and we're looking into this now, and we need to sit down with Tony, because we can't do anything unless Tony gives us our approval, so we know how to get in there to look at better how to manage our emails, our database programs, our understanding of who's golfing, okay, and how to target these people. Another thing that, they were, both places were very strong on it, was loyalty program, okay? And we're going to develop that, okay? So if you play so many times, we will give you some benefits, okay? It's like a point system, so, you know, you can maybe play a lot of times, you know, you can get sodas, a free round of golf, a sleeve of balls, these are the types of things that we're looking into. We're also going to update, run a program for championships, a junior program, okay, for championships, a town program for championships. But this, these are the types of things that we learned from the RFQ, from these people. Also, one of the town, one of the town attorney, Jeff DiNavio, also talked to them to make sure that what we saw in the numbers was correctly. I know a few I've talked to, answered meetings and understanding this. So it's our recommendation is that really the town is the cheapest way to do it, okay? But we also understand that we've got to make some changes, probably have to spend some extra money to do this. But we also have to remember one other thing. This is a community's activity, this is for everybody. One of the things when I first got involved in this, golf is from ages of four, three, two, to eighty-nine, okay? It's the type of thing that you see all over the place. There's one other thing, which we did make a change already, which the commission, not the commission, but the two companies told us, our fees were a little low on the membership. So as of April sixteenth, we are changing the cost of the membership program. So anybody up until the fifteenth can get the old membership until that time, but after that, we realized that, it was some suggestions from a lot of different people that we were a little bit too low in our pricing. And we're trying to be fair, but we also have an obligation to the town to pay for some of the expenses that've gone up. One of the examples, when we first started, what a bill was eight thousand dollars. This past year, twenty-eight thousand dollars. The fertilizing was eleven thousand dollars when we first started, last year was thirty-seven thousand dollars. So the cost of doing business, like anything in this town, goes up, okay? There are just a few of the items around, and we are trying to make sure that this is a facility for everybody, and one of the last things that we got told by all the five management companies that came out, that this is in beautiful shape, beautiful golf course. And, you know, and we're going to try to target it a little bit differently, but we really recommend, I guess, our, we make the decision, I don't know, but I'm making, letting you know that the commission feels the best way to do this is in-house from a financial standpoint.
Joe, who takes care of all, like, the administrative stuff? Is that the gentleman that's there full-time, like?
Teddy does that, but, you know, I hate to say this, some of the commission members are very involved, like me.
No, 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 nothing, that's a bad thing, I'm just saying, for maybe, and then what about doing something like with marketing, maybe paying a firm to
Well, that's one of the things that we're, the loyalty programs that we need
You have a gentleman there that's supposedly very good, Teddy, right?
Well, Teddy's, one of the things that we did learn, okay, is that you can't, the superintendent is a person who grows grass and can manage some of the things. But the other piece of a, from a marketing standpoint, you know, we need to look at some other folks to talk to, and that's what we're going to do.
Because that seems to be what you're really missing, not so much running, right?
Well, we're missing a marketing program, but we're also missing a person who can do this, okay?
That's what I'm thinking.
And one of the things that if you can look at is a professional, okay? Bill FitzHenry took care of all this, Bill took care of the hours, Bill took care of this. And you can't expect, like, I'm semi-retired, okay? So I do a lot, okay?
Right.
And I don't mean that, I enjoy it, I've been doing
No, no, I don't mean that, but if you have somebody that that's what they do for, you know.
Right, that's what we want to do, and that's really the key reason.
Because I think it's like the best kept secret, I think a lot of people don't even know.
But some people don't know, the true golfers know where it's at.
Right.
But, but we want everybody to know about it, and that's one of the reasons about hiring a PGA professional, he's trained in this, okay? He understands how to get more people in. He, he'll be there to give lessons, he'll be there to organize a town golf championship, okay? So these, this is an important thing. Yes, it costs money, but
No, I, listen, I agree, I have to, it's what you said, you have to spend money.
Spend money to make money.
Yeah.
Right.
I think there's two important points to pick up where Joe left off. We did analyze the numbers after we had Jeff DiNofiero, at the suggestion of this board, talk to Billy Casper, because we had some sketchy information, and Jeff did, had several conversations with the Billy Casper organization. And when I looked at the information after Jeff talked to Billy Casper organization, we would, it would cost us more, about twice as much.
Almost twice, yeah.
Yeah, we would lose twice as much money, excuse me, than we were losing now.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think, I still remember how to look at a P and L, and work a P and L.
I noticed that.
And I, and I couldn't, I said, this is not right. And I checked it out with Jeff, I said, is this information right? And he said, yeah. And Jeff and I both agreed, said, well, this makes no sense for the town, number one. Number two, then, and I think I can say this, Billy Casper did withdraw.
Right, they did withdraw, after
Because they felt there would have been a conflict of interest with some of the other courses that they manage in the area.
Right.
Actually, their clients asked them to withdraw.
Yeah.
Because they felt there was a conflict of interest, and their clients felt that they would be losing some of the golfers that they draw to their courses would now come to ours.
Right.
So that was kind of good, but not the way the numbers were flowing.
But they were also the highest, too.
Yeah.
They were also the highest.
So, based on that, there was no one left, so we had to figure out
Well, there was one other firm.
What do we do? So like I said to Joe, and I met with the commission last Tuesday, was it?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday. I said, we got some free advice here, guys, you don't, if you don't realize it. They told us what was wrong, I said, let's take that advice and run with it, and that's what Joe and his commission has done.
And I think you're right in saying that they withdrew because of their other conflicts, but they also saw that their pricing, when we got really down to, when Jeff talked to them, and I talked to them, that their pricing was, as you said, almost double, so they knew
Yeah, and you really got down to the detail, and I said, this is crazy.
This is crazy. So I think it was a combination for them, I think, an easy way to get out.
I just, you know, I spent some time with Joe, I went through all the proposals, spent some time with Teddy, and I think this is the right decision. I would just offer a couple of things. You said you're revisiting the membership policy, I think there, if, my impression is there are some abuses of the membership, not, and you've looked at repricing, but there are people that play a ton of rounds for not much money, and I think that's a little bit unfair. Secondly, Rick Maynard was here two weeks ago with a bid for fertilizer. Have you considered actually putting the fertilizers out to bid?
We do, and actually, he and Teddy already worked together with this.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, don't forget, it's not, no longer called Lesco, something else.
So, same with
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, you're doing it.
We pulled that a while ago.
A while ago. Okay, that's fine, I just, the coincidence of the two.
Right.
And secondly, or thirdly, as I've said many times, you know, we subsidize a lot of services in town, as long as you're efficient as you can possibly be, you know, I think this is a service that many town members use, and, you know, while I don't like losing money, I, we understand that we subsidize a lot of things in this town, so it's, you know, it's not necessary to be profitable, but to be as efficient as possible.
And that's what we're trying to do. And one other, the other thing, which Casper, as well as Commonwealth noted, we have around thirty-five percent of the rounds being played between thirty-five and forty by the youth of this town. So it really shows that, you know, the youth is using the facility, okay? And we think by expanding the hours and doing localized, I don't say localized, but certain period times of discounts and trying to get people to play when they're, we don't, we know the low times, we have a history with low times, so we can do this. Bringing back the twilight thing. So these are the things that the person can go up and not pay, if they can play fast, they can get maybe nine in, but they don't pay the full rate, okay? And these are the things that we're trying to bring back.
Good. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe, I'm not a golfer, but I want to thank you and the committee for all your work.
Yeah.
You obviously have done a ton of work here.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
I agree with Carl.
Echo Carl's comment, and I know the work you put in, and it's, as far as the condition of the course, it's excellent. We always said that. And it's, it's an asset to the course, to the town, that's all we can say.
And we did, you know, the course opened last week, and the people already are raving about the changes
The new tees.
The new tees that we, the three that we put in.
Right, so
Joe, for all your work, take a free round today.
I gotta go see if I got any colored balls.
He needs neon orange balls.
Thank you.
First he claims it's abuse, now he wants to give away rounds. That's after he pays his membership.
Yesterday.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to eleven, as we skipped that one. Appointments and resignations, we have eleven dot one, and only one. Act on an appointment of Lynn Landry to the regional, region two, regional mental health board in Ketchum area, number eight. Do I have a motion?
I'll move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Despite the awkward term for the
I know, I don't know. Twelve, request for the use of town property, we have only one.
I would move that we approve the use of the closer to free ride on the Green September tenth.
Second.
Six months away. Made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thirteen, correspondence, actually, we have two, the Public Works Department Monthly Report, and the Building Officials Monthly Report. Comments? Four, actually, I have one I put in your box, I don't know if you've seen it yet, the Fire Commission has applied for the safer grant, that's for your information. Look at that, I just got that Friday afternoon. Okay, old business, the only thing I have is to remind the seniors that we're still in the enrollment period for the tax breaks program. It ends May fifteenth, so if you haven't reapplied yet, or you haven't applied, if you want to get into the program, you have till May fifteenth, and you have to contact the assessors' office. That's all I have. Anything on the old business other than that? New business, anybody? Okay. Public forum, anybody wishing to address the board? See none?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned at ten oh four, thank you, everybody.
Joe, the safety thing, is this something